Okay, well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the city council meeting. It is Monday, November the 7th, 2016. At this time, I will call the meeting to order, and we'll be led in prayer by Pastor Steve Anderson from the Cornerstone Church.
Let's pray. Lord God, thank you that you lead us through life. Thank you for these, your servants, who have at the point of life where they're servant-leading the people of Watertown. Thank you for their experiences that they've been through. Thank you for their leadership capabilities and abilities. Bless them, guide them, give them wisdom, give them discernment. Sometimes leadership is fun, sometimes it's not so fun. Give them perseverance when that's needed. May we honor you and please you as we lead our city. We pray in Jesus' name, and we all say, "Amen."
Thanks, Pastor Steve. I almost said an "Amen" during the middle of that thing. I heard ya. Shelley, you want to get the roll call, please?
I can do that. Albertson?
Here.
Bueller?
Here.
Danforth?
Here.
Manti?
Here.
Riefenberger?
Here.
Roby?
Here.
Solom?
Here.
Thorson?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley. All right, at this time, I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion on the consent agenda. Motion by Beth, second by John. Any questions on that, any concerns? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number two, approval of the agenda. I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Bruce, second by Glenn. Any questions, changes? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number three, application for a location transfer retail on-off sale malt beverage license from Dakota Butcher Incorporated, doing business as Dakota Butcher at 1339th Avenue Southwest, to Dakota Butcher Incorporated, doing business as Dakota Butcher Beans and Brew at 1923 Willow Creek Drive, Suite 1. Thought I did an advertisement there for him. I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Mike, second by Beth.
We need a public hearing first.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Let's open the public hearing. If there's anybody that wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is your opportunity. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. And now, I'll look for that motion and a second. Motion by Mike, second by Beth. Any questions or concerns?
So is this a... Is this... Are they moving their operation from out west to this location? Or what is the...
They have an additional license out there, if I'm not mistaken, out west of town. They're moving this to their new location.
And so this will be an expansion?
Yes.
Different site, okay.
Yep, they'll have two spots going. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number four, application for a new retail on-off sale wine license to Dakota Butcher Incorporated, doing business as Dakota Butcher Beans and Brew at 1923 Willow Creek Drive, Suite 1. At this time, I will open the public hearing. If there's anybody who wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is your opportunity. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Bruce, second by Dan. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number five, application for a transfer of ownership and location of a retail on-off sale malt beverage license from Rock McGilvery, which is an inactive license, at 72 Paradise Drive, to Magic Mall Casino Incorporated, doing business as Magic Mall Casino Number 2, at 520 and 1/2 10th Street, Southeast, Suite B. At this time, I will open the public hearing. If there's anybody who wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is your opportunity. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Glenn, second by Beth. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, 2016 Street Improvement Projects Assessment Role Resolution Number 16-34. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If there's anybody who wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is your opportunity. I feel like I'm on an airplane, you know, those gals that get up there, or the guy that gets up there. Yeah.
Exit this way?
Yeah, I think I can get a Diet Coke for you. That's one good thing. Since nobody's here, I will close the public hearing. I'm gonna look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Randy, second by Mike. And Shane, do you want to go through this and give an idea on this improvement project?
Okay, we... Just so there's no confusion, we did discuss this at the last meeting. We didn't, however, have a proper notice publication procedure done, so we brought it back to you. I have nothing new to add, and actually have no further information or questions from those folks that were being assessed. So with that, I'll just paraphrase that all of the assessments due to good bids and construction quantities did go down from what our preliminary assessment costs were, and we received no complaints.
Shane, are these the 15th Street and 12th Avenue, Southeast?
Correct.
Okay.
Shane, did you... I wasn't at the last meeting, but when we talk about the assessment role, is there supposed to be an attachment here in regards to who and how much?
Not for this process. This is more about the hearing. They each got their individual assessment role and sent to them individually.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, resolution recommending a violation of fine amount to be entered on the Third Judicial Circuit's Court Fine and Bond Schedule regarding violations of revised ordinance of the City of Watertown, Section 19.0302, which is a failure to yield to pedestrians in crosswalks, Resolution Number 16-38. And, Justin, you want to handle that one?
Absolutely, Mayor. You got done taking... Well, that's a mouthful to go through, so I'd be happy to, you know, not tack on too much there. The idea with this resolution is that the city council has the authority to promulgate punishments of ordinance. This is a separate realm, slightly. The courts are authorized, per state statute, to have ticketable offenses. Those offenses that are placed on a ticket, a specific dollar amount is given to them, and then a clerk within the court clerk's office, as a clerk magistrate, is able to take a paid ticket and process it. That is the guilty plea, if you will, to the offense that is, in this case, the traffic offense. And so what the courts have done is created a schedule, a fine and bond schedule, and have listed upon that schedule, per state law, all of these different offenses that occur in state law, as well as in local ordinance, and has fixed the fine amount on that schedule. And because it's fixed on that schedule, it can be put on a ticket, and that ticket can then be processed by a clerk magistrate. So that is a separate concept from necessarily where your sovereign authority is to set punishments in that large range up to $500. In this case, the court is setting a ticketable punishment within that range. And based upon the resolution here, these preambulatory clauses, law enforcement asks that we include a new offense on the ticket because of an increase in these offenses occurring in the community. And so it would be easier to process these by getting these... This particular offense, failure to yield, on the ticket. So ultimately, what you're doing here is sending a recommendation to the presiding judge of the Third Judicial Circuit, who sets the fine and bond schedule, that that schedule should be revised to allow for these tickets to be processed.
Perfect. I think they all got it. So at this time, I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Beth, second by Brad. Any questions for Justin on this?
I thought he said he wasn't gonna add a little lot to it, so...
Yeah, I will tell you that, just so you guys also remember, you know, Justin is working on all our ordinances, and time to time, you're gonna see one here and there that's just an update, or kind of brings it back to where it really should be at this time. They get a little old at some time. So is there any other questions on this? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Opposed?
Saw a little bit of a decrease, so that's always good for the employee. Everything else stays the same. We did not change anything in the plan, and so the recommendation tonight is to ask you to authorize us to renew the wellmark contract, as is with the premiums as proposed.
Perfect. So at this time, I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Don, second by Bruce. I bet Pennsylvania wishes they saw something like this. I think so, rather than a 58 percent increase. So I have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no questions, I'll look for council action.
Mayor, can I...
Sure.
Shelley, in this, we do reference the use of the $2,000 deductible... What? I can't remember exactly the terminology on that. When we put that in place, what, three or four years ago, probably? How much is that getting used, you know? Any idea?
We average about 45 claims per year that we reimburse. Yep. Yep. And it's pretty steady.
So you've been budgeting 10 percent additional every year. Has that been the same amount, or does it goes up 10 percent from the previous year's budget?
Yep, it's based on the current premium, and we increase it by 10 percent each year.
Do we have some point in time when we're gonna not have to do that, or...
It all depends on where we want to take this partial self-funding.
One of my concerns is I... This afternoon, I went... And I don't know that I got the numbers perfect, but it seems like we had somewhere around a $2 million premium total for the year. If that's the case, that's $200,000 increase.
Hmm, I'd have to... I don't think I have that with me, but anyway...
We don't need to deal with it tonight, but here's my concern going forward. Using that number, whether that's accurate or not, in 10 years, we're looking at $5 million something, if we just keep adding 10 percent on every year. I don't think it's sustainable, so I think we need to address this. I know you gotta... You just had union contracts and stuff, but I think before we get to that point next time, we're gonna have to look at where this is going.
I don't think she's... They're actually adding 10 percent on every year. It's 10 percent of what last year's premium was.
Right, it's 10 percent on the city's share. So like, in 2017, we budgeted $1,668,000 for the total city health premium.
So then you'd add...
Or the 1.8 million, I'm sorry. $1,865,000 is what the 2017 budget is.
That's for the city's share, after you deduct what the employees pay.
Right, that's the city's share, yes. Yep, and...
What I'm saying, if we add on 10 percent, in 10 years, we're gonna be pushing $5 million.
No, we don't add 10 percent every year, though. What we do is take last year's premium...
Right.
And add 10 percent. Then next year, we'll take whatever that premium was.
So it's not 10 percent?
Every year, no.
It's 10 percent of what we pay.
Right. Yep, we add... We basically add 10 percent to the cost of the premium. So if it was $500, we add 10 percent to that, and then we apply the formula, the first 600, and then a 60/40 split. And then that's how we budget. We budget for the city's share, based on 10 percent of a premium increase.
So next year, we're gonna budget less than we did this year?
Yeah, or right about the same, yep.
Because if it's a little bit less, and you're adding 10 percent on, it should actually be a little bit less.
Right, right. So, yep, it's based on the premiums, and we add 10 percent to that, and then we do the formula for the city's share. Yep. So really, based on... When I did the math on the current... What we have, and where the premiums came in, we overbudgeted about $141,000.
And you're saying that this year, if everything was the same, about 90 of that would get used, correct?
About 45,000. We have about 45 claims, and we reimburse $1,000 to get back to...
I thought it was $2,000.
Nope, no, we reimburse it $1,000 back to the $2,000 deductible.
So what's your budget? What is your... No, your balance currently on that account? That's a restricted account, correct?
It is a restricted account.
Okay, so what is the current balance on that?
I have... That I don't have. It's less than $200,000.
Okay. Because I think what Bill is saying, and we had talked about this way back when, is at some point in time...
It should sustain some...
There will get a point where we don't budget the extra amount for it, because we have enough in there, right?
Right, right, yep, and that...
I think that's where you were going, Bill?
Right.
Yeah.
Right, and we're not... We're just... We're not quite there. And sometimes there are certain departments that we don't take any money from. Either they have a negative cash balance, or they don't have enough in there, or there's enough change in staffing that it messes with the numbers, and so we don't take as much out either. So, you know, I estimate, based on the numbers we have now, but we haven't done open enrollment, so I don't really know what that actual estimated number is gonna be until we finish our open enrollment.
I can anticipate that to move up, I would think.
It all depends.
But, you know, we did, just so you guys understand, Shelley and I, we've gone through these numbers. Shelley had them go through the... What the cost is with the $2,000 deductible, the $3,000 deductible, and a $4,000 deductible, to see if we went to a four, and then kicked back the two, if that would make any great difference. And it did not. In fact, it stayed about the same. So we felt as though the $3,000 was the way to go. It has worked out very, very well. Any other questions? I believe I have a motion and a second on the floor, so at this time, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to number nine, approval of the updated Personnel Policy Manual. A full drafted version of the Personnel Manual is available at the http://wattetownsd.us/documentscenter-view984. This time, I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion, and then we'll have Shelley help us out on that. Motion by Beth, second by Mike. Shelley, you want to take that?
I can. I listed a one-page document in the agenda that just basically went over the changes. We always go through and try to find some of those grammatical errors, and we did some of that in the spacing. We also replaced Fraternal Order of Police Union with Police Officers Association. They made that change, union-wise, in this last go-around. And then you'll have specific changes, and those are really based off of our last union negotiations, and we just haven't gotten around to having a current policy, which we do want to have in place. So all of these basically came from our last union, including the adding vision insurance. That was something that the union had asked for the city to provide, and so we did add that. So we wanted to add that deduction benefit in there. So I can answer any questions you guys have.
Question, Shelley. I know how technical and complicated this has gotten over the years. I mean, do we get some assistance? Not to say that you're not able to, your office can't do it, but do we get some outside assistance on this periodically to review our Personnel Manual?
We haven't in the past. We have a policy committee that gets put together every so often, and that committee gets together, and it's just made up of basic department staff. And then we go through each individual policy, look at it, make any recommended changes, and that goes to the employees and to the union for 30 days for comment, and then it will come in front of the council for approval if there's any changes that are requested. But we've never actually contracted with an outside service to review it.
I'm just thinking, I mean, we had this conversation with the Affordable Care Act here just last... At our last meeting, just wondering if that's something that we should be looking at, some outside assistance in this area as well at some point down the road.
Might be a good time with Audra, being new also, if we wanted to do something like that. She would have a different look at it, you know, just being relatively new, so if you want... I don't know if you want to do that or not, but...
It's not a bad idea. I think we can take a look at it and see. See what's out there. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number 10, authorization for the mayor to sign a hazardous mitigation grant award for tornado shelter. This time, I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion. We'll have Don come up. So a motion by Randy, second by Brad. Hi, Don, welcome. I know that it was tough for you to get out of bed today. That's what I heard. I heard that.
Let's not go over there.
Yeah.
I think the kicker has a little bit of trouble.
I'm with you. Okay, take it on here, Don.
Well, thank you, everybody. Happy to announce that Watertown has been selected for a hazard mitigation grant. This grant is for the tornado shelter that we want to construct out at the soccer association. If you remember, we applied back in early spring for this grant, and the state went ahead and pre-approved this onto the feds. Ran into a little bit of a snag with the feds, based on the floodplain map, and they determined they needed to review it a little bit longer this... Into the summer and into the fall. They had a flood revision map that came through. They looked at it and identified that everything is okay out there. So they went ahead and awarded it last week in the amount of $224,528. Now, the city has a share of 25 percent, if you remember, when we went ahead and applied for this, which is around $56,132. This money has been set aside in the 212 CIP 2017 fund, and I think the mayor is going to maybe appoint a project team together to get this going along. I will manage the performance grant, quarterly reports for this project going forward. We're hoping to maybe get this bid this winter sometime, and hopefully getting shovels in the dirt maybe spring, early summer region timeframe, Mayor. I think that's kind of worth thinking.
Yep, I would think so. Don, and just to... On the team, we'll start out with Keith up in Building Services. You know, that's what he does, is construction. So we'll have Keith kind of take over the project for us, and he can put together a team up there.
Wonderful, wonderful. So I ask for permission tonight to move forward with this project, because it's kind of an exciting project, that we're able to get these funds for folks that could be in inclement weather in that softball area out there, the soccer association, and obviously the folks that live in that mobile states just north of there. So with that, thanks.
Any questions for Don?
Is this total project cost amount in line with what we had looked at previously? I don't remember the number. It is?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, because that's the number you asked for in the grant...
Correct, yes.
And that's what you got, is...
Yeah.
Now, my understanding is, is if we don't spend that much, it's still 75/25, is how the dollars go.
Absolutely correct, yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
Just want to thank Don for looking into the grant, and also, they've been working with the soccer association to try to enhance both that and the soccer program also, so...
I would agree. It's a good deal. So at this time, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Don.
Thanks.
Number 11, authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement with the U.S. Geological Survey for Operations and Maintenance of Various Water Gauging Stations and Related Equipment for Water Resource Investigations. This time, I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Beth, second by Bruce. Okay, and are there any... Shane, I'm gonna have you go ahead and get started on this. I will tell you, what was kind of funny about this whole thing, I thought I had him. I read this, and I read gauging, and I thought he had it misspelled, so I actually Googled a gauging station, and he was correct. I had a G-A-U, and you had G-A-G.
Well, my wife would tell you that I am a horrible speller, and I freely admit to it, but in this case, I did have it in the right context. But what this is, is this is an annual agreement. The city's been renewed this agreement for many years now. Basically, it entails a few gauging stations that monitors the flow of the river, Big Sioux River, as it comes through the community. And there's also some monitoring of the lake levels in Compeska and Lake Pelican as well. So this is something... Nothing new. This community's supported that annually. This year's allotment is a total budget of $40,473.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Shane. Number 12, consideration of bids received for the Big Sioux River weir breach repair project. This time, I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion.
So moved.
Motion by Randy, second by Glenn. Shane, if you want to take this.
Okay. On October 27th, we took bids for the project. We did receive seven bids, which is a nice representation of how interested the contractors were on that. Just to clarify, our refined engineer's estimate was $141,000, and we had kept that kind of vague intentionally, as you can see how the bids scattered all the way from a low of $138,000 to a high of $361,000. So we were a little bit shy on locking into a estimate, but in the end, we got seven good bids, or well, three good bids out of the seven, anyway, that were down around our estimate. And with that, we've done our research. The low bidder has done this kind of work in our area, is actually a member of our community, and our research has led us to recommend that we awarded the bid to Argo Excavating of Watertown.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments on this, if I may. You know, if you look at the picture up there, the one on the left is without a cap on it. Now, the one on the right has a cap. If I'm not mistaken, Shane, your bids came with that alternate to put the cap on. That's where the $30-some thousand came into play. I think it looks nice. I think it saves the project in the long run. I will also just like to mention to the council that the Lake Compeska Water District has approved to put $25,000 into this project, which I just think is just wonderful that they've done that. So we... With a partnership with them, it works out really well. Any questions?
They basically paid for the cap.
That's exactly right.
But vision beyond the limits are looks, but they're much stronger.
Absolutely. It's... It will be stronger. You're absolutely right.
My only question, Shane, is that, okay, what do we do to monitor this at 10 years from now? We're not sitting here doing the same thing and replacing this thing. And I mean, I've had people say that, you know, that river is gonna go wherever it wants to go, and, I mean, how do we, you know, protect this, or monitor, or maintain this?
Well, we'll probably have to implement some type of annual inspection.
I think it would be very, very easy to put this in Roger Foot's hands. I mean, that's his forte, is Big Sioux River. And I think when he's out there looking and monitoring, he can do this. The original weir, if I'm not mistaken, was substantially smaller than this particular one. I just want to remind you that this is 360 feet long, so it is going to take a lot of area. So I'm excited to see this get done. We should be completed, if I'm not mistaken. And here it said they have to be done by January the 3rd. Am I correct?
Correct. And actually, the contractors onboard, we've had a meeting with him last Friday, kind of explained to him how our paperwork system goes. So, you know, given award today, we told him, you gotta have your insurance and your bond in order, and get that done as soon as possible. If you have any questions, call our staff, and we'll help him answer any questions. So what we're trying to do is speed up his ability to start work, and hopefully, within two weeks, we'll be seeing construction out on the site.
And I just also wanted to mention that this, for funding, if you remember, go back to a few council meetings ago, it really wasn't something that we had planned on. We will be using contingency funds on this to pay for it.
Shane, will he need an excavation permit on this, by the way?
We've got all the permits we need.
And then, you're gonna have this, if I, is it driven into the ground 10 feet, 11 feet, 12 feet? How far is it?
10 feet.
10 feet in the ground?
And it's, it's based on an elevation, so the sheets, some of the sheets will be, you know, full 10 feet in the ground, others will be maybe 8 feet. And then, we'll put dirt and rock up against the, so there really won't be any exposed metal when we're done.
You know, I would like to just address one more thing about this, just to make sure my understanding is correct. You have such a clean lake this year. Everybody talks about how clean it is. You can see almost to the bottom. By putting this weir in, there's a possibility that next year it might not be as clean. Am I correct?
That potential exists. Basically, what stirs up the lake is when we have a large inflow coming from upstream and that backs into the lake, and then that current stirs up the silt that's in the bottom of the existing lake, or adds to it. And we didn't have that this year, and I, going on a limb, because I wasn't here last spring, but what I understand is that two springs in a row, we didn't have a substantial amount of water flowing into Lake Compeska that led to the clarity that we currently see, so.
Right, and a lot of that went through the breach.
Some of it did.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions for Shane on the weir? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This is a good deal, Shane. Thanks for getting this done as fast as you did. Number 13, consideration of change order number two, which is a final to the contract with J&amp;J Earthworks Incorporated for the 2016 sanitary sewer replacement project, decreasing the contract amount by $12,298.49. At this time, I'll look for a motion, a second for discussion. Motion by Mike, second by Bruce. You want to just give us an update on this, then Shane?
Yeah, this project's done, and what this change order does is takes the as-built quantities, you know, adjusts the as-bid up to the, up to, or in this case, down to the as-built quantities. And the project went very well. We did incorporate some of the work here. This is our first year of coordinating mill and overlay work along with the sanitary sewer work, so we, we kind of got some double benefit out of this project. So, rather than just patch the middle of the streets, we ended up with overlaying the full width and length of many of these segments. So, I think that it worked well enough this year that we're going to continue that approach on our future projects.
Perfect. Any questions for Shane? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 14, consideration of change order number one, which is a final to the contract with K&amp;L Mechanical for the City Park Campground Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, increasing the contract amount by $2,755.72. At this time, I'll look for a motion, a second for discussion. Motion by Beth. Second by Bruce. Shane, you want to take that?
Sure. This is a project that was brought to our office through the Parks and Rec Department. They had a bid, or a bid item, a budget item, that for the spring to do, add sewer service to several campsites at the City Park Campground. And we didn't get the project put together fast enough to do the work in the spring, so we decided to wait till after Labor Day and, and then go forward with that work. The project went very well. We actually hit our budget quantities very well. What didn't happen was, is when we got down to the existing sanitary sewer main, we were down below the, the water table, or basically the level of the lake, and so we had to do some dewatering to make that connection, and, and that's what's reflected in this. The most, the majority of the extra overrun, the $2,700, is just for that dewatering. Otherwise, we were within $55 of the project, so we did very well.
Perfect. Any questions for Shane on that? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 15, consideration of change order number two to the contract with Gray Construction for the Watertown Softball Complex Project, decreasing the contract amount by $31,302.28. So, at this time, I'm gonna look for a motion, a second for discussion purposes. Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Dan. Okay. Bobby, how you doing?
Good, good evening.
Give us a little update on this.
Yeah. I think everybody has the copy of the change order in their packets, and I'm not going to hit every item, because there's tons of them. But I thought what I'd do is go through, and I'd hit the major items. And then, if you guys have questions on any others, just feel free to ask me, and I'll do my best to answer them. But, basically, if you start through, and what I'm looking at is the second page, which has, starts with item 7, and it has a whole list of items, if you got that in front of you. Basically, the first five items are all pretty large items. There are large pluses and large minuses. Those five items all have to do with the earthwork. And if you remember what we were trying to do, we were trying to save money by taking more from across 20th to the south there. And we were trying to utilize more of that, less of the offsite borrow, which costs more money. So, if you add those five items together, and then also, on the following page, item CCO-2-8, that item has to do with taking more earthwork from across the road to the south. You have to add that in. But overall, we found ways to save basically $65,000 on the earthwork with those items. So, it was really a good deal, and it worked out great. So, and it looks nice out there, so. Next large item that you'll find, 5-inch fiber reinforced concrete sidewalk with gravel cushion. We had a couple notes that got mixed up on the plans. So, when we actually measured them, that's what the actual quantities were. So, that's one of those where when you measure it, it is what it is. And we had one there that we were shy on, so. Asphalt. We were able to save a bunch of money on the asphalt. There's actually two items with asphalt, because we did the alternate bid for the roadway as well. And if you go to item A11, towards the bottom of that first page, there's another $10,000 that we saved on the asphalt. Biggest reason we saved money on the asphalt, a couple of things. We did, if you remember, had a change order to take the curb and gutter from 24-inch to 32-inch, so we saved eight inches all the way along the, both sides of the roads, around all the islands out there, and the parking lots, and all that. So, then we also, what we do is we figure it slightly high on how many pounds per cubic foot for asphalt, because we know when we get into radius and those kinds of things, it takes more, so we tried to build in a little bit of a cushion. But between the two, we came out really good. That's one of the areas I did insist that we were there when they were doing it to make sure that we got the four inches, but we didn't get more than four inches. And so, what you see there is a reflection of us doing our job for you, I guess, and making sure that you got what you paid for, and we found a way to save some money on that, too, so. 24-inch curb and gutter, there's $12,000 there. Basically, that's the north parking lot. We were asked to, about in June or July, to add the north parking lot there by the Future Ice Arena. And that curb and gutter is to go around that, what I'm calling the north parking lot on the north side of that roadway.
And Bob, I'm gonna just touch on that before you lose that thought.
Okay.
One of the things we did, since we had the road wide open, and we knew we were going to build ice to the north, we actually put in all the parking on the north side. We're gonna share the parking lot for the ice and the ball dimes at the same time. So, we did add that, that whole thing. I don't know how many parking spots are on that north side. We, I think we did very well by putting that in. But, you're gonna see in the next council agenda item, there's some costs involved with the engineering side of doing that. So, that's kind of how that came up on that, on that parking lot.
Okay. Valley gutter, same thing. There was a valley gutter all along the north parking. We had curb and gutters, we had to change it to valley gutter, so you could drive across it. Most of the rest of them were pretty minor, till you get down to 6-inch fire hydrants. We had a pretty good deduct there. We had had it bid to furnish and install, and then, once the street got platted, Municipal Utilities actually furnishes the fire hydrants. So, really, all we needed was an install price. So, that's one of the items you're gonna see in a change order item here in a little bit. But we had a savings there, is why you see the deduct. Didn't need as much, 24-inch RCP. Agrolime, we underran that. Jay's probably gonna buy the extra agrolime from them to use on the fields in town. We did save, this isn't taking it to exactly what we've put out there so far, because we think there's a chance we may have to top dress them and do a little bit in the spring. So, we, we saved some money still to do some more agrolime next spring. And that's really it, until we get to new items. Any questions on the items before I get into the new ones?
The only question I have is really not related to this, but the topic of the agrolime. At the new facility, are we allowing for any storage area of agrolime out there? Is there anything that's been built into that site for some onsite storage?
Are you talking for like a stockpile?
Right.
Of agrolime? No.
Okay.
No. There is, we have some storage facilities. Votex is gonna be building a two-stall garage that we've already got the pad out there for. And then, there is some storage, but it'd be more for like chalk and bases, and maybe the shade structures. Right, right. I think there's, I think there's sufficient room if you need it.
That's not a bad idea, Mike.
Mike, are all those other diamonds now, are they, do they all have agrolime?
I believe that they do.
Okay. I would like to just, I think, hit all the new items, just so everybody knows what, what they are. Starting with 2-1, moving the two electrical transformers to outside the perimeter fencing. Electrical engineer had them spotted, trying to save some money, kind of in between fields and about halfway down. So, it's kind of gonna be in an area where you would typically be warming up when you're playing catch and those kinds of things. So, when we got good prices, we did get prices to move them outside the fence and really clean that area up. So, that's what that item is for. CCO-2-2, water main casing pipe. When we exposed by 14th and 14th, the storm sewer and the water main, we found out they were close enough that it did have to have casing pipe. And the contractor didn't have it with him, so he had to come back and do the casing pipe. And it was, he had to dewater, and so that's what that additional cost is there. Second mortar color, there's two colors of burnished block on the concessions building. And I know Steve was at a meeting and started asking questions of the architect on that one, and made some phone calls, and we were able to get the, a color that was supposed to match exact with the colors that we had in there. And so, rather than have all the mortar being one color, the mortar matches each different color of block, and it really looks sharp out there. Lift station elbows and trash basket, basket modifications. We designed these for standard hookups, and depending on which one comes, they each have their own little spacings on their, well, these, the ones that came had to have different spacing in order for everything to fit and work. So, those are modifications that had to be made on the lift station. Extra dewatering for the water and sewer extension for the ice arena. We had the water and sewer stubbed out already. At the time, the decision was made to add the north parking lot, but we didn't have it past that, because, I mean, it really wasn't part of the project, and we didn't know for sure where the parking was gonna end up. So, we did a quick kind of design with the city involved, and we had to extend those. Extending them meant, though, that the contractor had come back and dewater again. So, it was a lot of work for adding services. It was the right thing to do, but it just was an extra. Additional costs for switching out type B casting with type E. We had some castings in there that, out there that were made for full back curb, the 6-inch high curb. And we went to the off-street parking. There was one there, and there was actually two on the other side that were right by the islands. Instead of the high back curb, we had to go to the ones that are made for like valley gutters, so they don't have the back on them. They are a lot more expensive. We did have the three castings here, but we were doing work with another contractor on another project. He was willing to buy those, so we didn't have to pay a restocking fee. And all we paid then was the difference between the high back and the valley gutter one. So, contractors were really good about it. Transformer pads for electrical service for the lift station. We weren't aware that we were gonna have to have the transformer pad and by the lift station. Municipal Utilities requires that, so we had to have Grays and Englested provide that. 2-8, the seed fertilizer mulch, the borrow pit area, that's a pretty big number. In the bid, we had the contractor responsible for seeding the borrow area. We were anticipating disturbing 14 acres. And when we decided to try to save the money on the dirt and take as much as we could across the road, the area went from 14 acres to 38 acres. So, there was another 24 acres that had to be seeded. And as you can see, $34,000 is not chump change, and the contractor had that coming. And because of how deep we could go and still drain everything, we had to go on a wider area. So, it was just a necessary evil, and overall, like I say, we still saved $65,000 by doing this. Extra costs for switching from 24-inch curb to 32-inch curb. I mentioned it earlier. Some of the savings you see in the asphalt, there's an add on the concrete here, going to what you guys would have for a standard curb section, which is 32-inch wide. 2-10, install or furnish fire hydrants. That's the cost to just install them with Municipal Utilities, and that's the savings that you saw earlier. Extra cost for seeding of outfields. The outfields had been seeded. They were looking pretty good, but they weren't looking prime. I mean, they weren't looking perfect. So, we had the seed consultant come, take a look at it. They recommended putting on 100% bluegrass, another half app. So, that, that's what that's for, and it made a huge difference. Three weeks later, they really filled in, and it looked really, really nice. Also, he recommended the second fertilizer application, so we, we did get told to go ahead and do that as well. Items 13 and 14, we're anticipating that we could have the same potential problem next year with everything else outside the fences and in between the fields. So, what we've done is we've added two items for another half app of seed in those areas, and another fertilizer, fertilizer application. We are dormant seeding, doing that right now this week. And if the dormant seeding comes up and fills in nice, then those two items, we can reduce those. So, there is some cushion still in here for things that we anticipate that we could have to do next year. Prep work and conduit for future misters or other appurtenances. Along the way, we had several things that we were asked to research and look into. One of them were, one of the things was these misting machines that, they're kind of got a fan, and they blow mist, and it would have been kind of neat. By the time we were done researching them, I think it would have been an extra $20,000. And everybody thought, well, it'd be kind of neat, but we weren't sure where we're at, and maybe someday. So, while we had all the sidewalk and everything tore up, we said, well, do you want us to throw the conduit in? Because that's pretty reasonable. Then, if you ever want to add an item there, you don't have to tear up concrete, and you can just run the wires and run the water tubing, and, and you can have at it. So, that's, that's what we did. I think it made a lot of sense. 16 is the pavement markings for the north parking lot. Obviously, we didn't know we were doing it, so we didn't have any markings bid for that. And irrigation modifications, when they were doing the tie-in at 14th and 14th, there were irrigation heads that there were no way around them, putting the curb and gutter back in there. And I think it was Mr. Hardy that has some storage units along there. And we promised him that we would take care of him, and that they would all go back in. And the bulk of it is for that. There were two irrigation boxes that went in, that when they put in the, they were low, they had to raise them. And it was because we showed the two main structures, or two of the three main structures out there with a slope, and they, when the kits came that they had, you had to put them in perfectly level, or it was gonna look really goofy. So, we ended up having to crown the concrete inside and not drain it all the way across. So, long story short, is we had to raise the irrigation things, and it wasn't the irrigation guy's fault, so. That's what that item is. Overall, you're looking at a $31,300 decrease on the change order. I still think there's some, a little bit, not much anymore, but I still think there's a little bit of wiggle room on that. I hope to bring you another little bit of a deduct, maybe again when we're all done next spring. But we still have that seeding hanging out there that we may want to put a second app on. We asked them not to do the pavement marking on the parking lots yet, because just gonna go through winter and not look nice and sharp, and we might as well wait and do it nice and fresh in the spring. So, they got that left to do, and we haven't seen the batting cage nets up yet. We told them we don't even want to see them till next spring. So, they're here and ready to go up, but there are some odds and ends items to go. But overall, they did a great job, just took longer than we thought it should have.
Okay. Any questions for Bob on this? Let's, uh...
Bob, are we, two questions that I have are, where are we at overall on the original budget? And then, secondly, is this gonna be playable then, next summer? Is that the plan?
I'll answer the second one first, because that's the easiest, yes. There, there are some areas that I'm concerned about, and John sent me some pictures. I haven't been able to open them, they're too big to open on my phone, but I'll get them tomorrow at work. But, we had some areas, right where the agrolime meets the grass, where it just wasn't a nice crisp line. And so, at one of our construction meetings, we asked them to do something, to go in with an edger or something, and really make that nice rounded, sharp-looking line transition from agrolime to grass. And they said they were gonna do that, and we sent our surveyors out and had them re-stake everything again. And Dustin was telling me tonight that he thought they did that, and that it looked good. And John was telling me that not so much, so we got some work to do there. But, in talking with Dustin, he's been great to work with, and he told me exactly what I thought he would. He said, you know what? In the spring, if it looks like it's not gonna be ready, we'll pay for the sod, and we'll sod it. And we'll make it so it works. I'd prefer it to come out natural, because I think it has, it lasts better and roots better. So, I'm hoping that, you know, we can get it dressed up and dormant seeded, and make it look nice, and, and still have it. But that's my only concern with playing, and that's not much of a concern, because I know we can overcome it, so. Your other question, when we opened bids on this... Your other question, when we opened bids on this a year and a half ago or so, we had, including engineering and construction and the alternate bid, we had a project of five million, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. So about five million, nine hundred and seventy thousand. Today, with engineering, including the number that we're gonna look at next, on the next item with us, that increase, construction, change, both, both change orders and Municipal Utilities reimbursement on the water main, we're at five million, nine hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So I show us just about thirty thousand dollars under where we were when we opened bids, even with our additional fees that we're gonna talk about.
Did, did those numbers include contingencies on your part or the city's part at all?
Just...
Mayor, do you know that, if that, like we did on the community center?
Yeah, actually, there wasn't the contingencies built into that. And basically, we came right in exactly where we had expected it to be. There's not...
Mike, Mike.
Me.
What's up, Shane?
Contingencies are only on the budgeting side. You don't put the contingencies on the construction side. So when there is a contingency, it's only a number that's held in place for Shelley to have money for any overruns or things like that. So the, when, when Bob's talking about contract costs, he's talking about hard costs that were bid and also his, his services. So don't confuse contingency and, and the, the hard costs.
Any other questions?
I'd like to add a little more if I could do that, Mayor. So we were about twenty-nine, thirty thousand dollars under the actual bids with where we're at today, but remember, that included the north parking lot. The north parking lot construction was about seventy-five thousand, and it was about, I, I would estimate, because at the time we did that, I thought we were gonna be under on our engineering, because things were going good and we were in good shape. So we just did it. I didn't ask for more money to, to do that. So we did that design, and if you figure ten percent on something like that, that's a seventy-five thousand dollar project for design and staking and construction side of things, I feel that there's about ninety thousand dollars there. So if you ignored that, you're basically about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars under where we were, even though it took us more time, too. And back March first, I looked it up, March first of this year, we were asked where we thought it was gonna end up, and I found my notes, and it said five million, eight hundred and fifty thousand. If you ignore the north parking lot, we're at five million, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars. So in my mind, it couldn't have gone any better. It's just, it's been good.
You know, I drove by there probably three weeks ago, and, and, you know, from, from the road, whatever road that is, it looked good. But I've had a number of people that have, have went by there as of late, and they said it really looks nice. And they were, gotten a lot of, a lot of compliments as far as the project and the way it looks, so.
Yep. Councilman Danforth, I just happen to have pictures that we, my staff took this morning. So I'll walk you through about a dozen or so here, kinda looking at the, the project. So this is sitting by the road, looking across the parking lot at the main building. We did, one of the things that we've kinda added to the project is clear to visible here, we, this decorative fencing, and then there's a curb along with it. So we did discuss a lot of these details as we went through the project. It's a big parking lot, and as the mayor said, we've had the foresight to plan that it's a shared parking lot, so we can use it both in the summer for softball and the winter for the ice arena. So that's a really huge benefit. You can see all, all the lights. I mean, this is gonna be a well-lit facility. You see all of the, the lighting, both on the parking end and the facility.
Can I just add something?
You bet.
Shane, when we showed those islands, the intention is that we will put some, some plants and...
Correct.
And some trees in those moving forward.
Yeah, they have perennials planned there. We just decided that the timing to put those in this fall wasn't quite right, so we, we're gonna wait till spring to do that. Good, good add there, Bruce. This is up closer to the concession stand. Of course, this is the front of the facility. We did a really nice job in scheming the colored concrete and gray. I mean, that, that feature is very value-added, in, in my opinion, for, from our engineer.
Yeah, and I would just add, you know, Bob's team was out there all the time helping, you know, get the curves laid out and get things set up for, for the end of construction, put that concrete down.
Yep, and, and here you can see the three shelters that we built around the concession stand area, too. And there's another photo of that coming. But here standing behind home plate, that's the best seat in the house is gonna look at, you know, during these games. And you can see, they did cut that edging that Bob was talking about, for the most part. There, there's still a little touch-up, and you'll see that in another picture here. The touch-up he's talking about is these corners here weren't quite cut correctly, and, and they've started the work to get that restored correctly. Batting, or, or the team dugouts there.
And Park and Rec has taken down all the shades already, you know, and put those away for storage.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, the, these structures back here have shades that can hang on them, their, their fabric. They'll look great in the summer. Close-up of the building, and here's that discussion on the mortar. You can see that the mortar that was used in these colored block matched the color of the block. Otherwise, it would've been tan inside of those. And so that was a really good call on, on getting that detail. I mean, it seems small, but visually, it's pretty, pretty impressive. There's a scoreboard. Each field has that. There's a close-up of a dugout. And the idea is that there's space here to hang equipment from the fence behind the, the players as they sit on the bench. It's a close-up of the ag lime. It'll need a little touch-up in the spring, but... There's a shelter, and these are the hard-fixed shelters. Again, in the background, you can see these aluminum rails, and that's where the fabric shades will be hung during the season. Again, back, kind of a bigger view of the parking lot, so. And you can see how green this is. I mean, it's, it's pretty amazing. I think we should be in really good shape to launch our softball season next spring. So...
Bob, how many trees did we put in? Do you recall the number?
Trees?
Yeah. Do you remember how many was it?
Hundred and...
Gazillion.
I, I think it's in here. I don't have... It's in the past, I don't have that.
A bunch.
Yeah, a lot.
Yeah. And, and here you can see these areas that are black dirt, yet that's the areas that we're dormant seeding right now. And so that'll have seed laying there, waiting for it to germinate in the spring, and expect those areas to green up very nicely.
On that one, Shane, you can show the transformer where we moved it outside the fence there.
Okay, right here, yep. This was originally planned for internally here, and in the end, we just decided it was a better location to put it out, away from where the people would expect to congregate, you know. A little more aesthetically pleasing as well, so.
Very nice.
So are the, are the alleyways between, I'm assuming, are those all irrigated as well?
Yes, yes. Everything, go back one, Shane, can you? Everything outside the fence that you see that's black there is all irrigated. It's all on zones where if you don't wanna put as much water there, you won't have to. You can, you can dictate that. But at least for getting it started and getting it established, and then I think you could cut back on some of those areas, because there isn't gonna be a lot of use there, so it won't get beat up as much. The potential is there for the well, it has not been installed yet on this one.
Okay.
So the plan is to use city water right now? Is that what you mean by that?
It's, it's still a struggle on the city water issue right now. We, we actually have them working to tell us exactly what the cost is for each, for each watering cycle that it has to go through. We were pouring just a ton of water on when we had to get the grass started. I don't think it's gonna be nearly as much as what was told us at, at one particular time. So we did not punch the well in. We got the applications in to get a well in there. The application has to go to the state, because they considered a farm well, you know, for irrigation. So it has to go through that permitting process. So we'll, we're probably gonna end up going through that first month or so, or a couple of months in the spring and in the summer, and see where we're at on the water. But we do have, we have the spot, you know, where it's proposed to go. Everything is there, the power's there.
And it's stubbed in, there's a pipe stubbed in...
Right.
So that you wouldn't have to tear up concrete to run the well into the...
Yeah.
Building, so that's there, too.
So I'm gonna go ahead and, and I think we have a motion, a second on the floor for number fifteen. So I'm gonna ask for, if there's no more questions on it, for council action. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I would say, I, I do wanna throw just a couple of kudos out. Bruce and John have, have worked constantly with, with Bob and great construction on this project, and there's been a lot of changes that they saw coming, that, that, because they've been so involved with softball and baseball, and, and it's just worked out really well for us. So thank you guys for doing that. Appreciate it.
Good job.
Okay, so now I'm gonna slide down to number sixteen. Consideration Amendment Number One to the professional service agreements with Helms and Associates for the Watertown Softball Complex project, increasing the contract amount fifty-seven thousand dollars. I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion on that. Motion by Beth, second by Glenn. Bob, you wanna touch on that one?
Unfortunately, I do. Probably my least, well, not probably, this is my least favorite thing to do, is to come back and ask for money. So if, if it wasn't...
Alls they can say is no.
If it wasn't deserved, I wouldn't be here. And if it was, and I don't, I like to head these off usually early, but like I say, I thought we were gonna be in good shape for quite a while. So it did, in our contract, we were estimated for twenty-six weeks of construction. I think with handpicked folks, that's a realistic thing, and if everything was going together and happening at the same time, I think it's a realistic thing. But one of the things that happens with competitive bidding, as you know, is you get the low bidder, it doesn't mean your quality's lower, but you might not get the same speed out of them. And so I think you got an awesome quality out there, it just took longer. And I'm not trying to take a shot at any contractors at all, it's just some don't have the number of people, they don't have the resources to do it the same. It just took longer. And we were ready to pave in June when we, the decision was made to add the north parking lot. And so instead of being in June, July with that, all of a sudden, we were in September, October doing the paving. And so it really extended things. I tried to work with Steve and the city on cutting back where I felt we could, but there were certain areas where I kinda insisted that we be there, because that's why I can bring you the change order that we did with the contractor, and still get you the quality that I know you all want on this facility. So we're about forty-two weeks in on a project that was twenty-six week budget. That's more than fifty percent over. At fifty-seven thousand, we're twenty-five percent over. I think six percent of that is due to the north parking lot, so we're nineteen percent over, and the contractor's fifty over on time, in what I estimated it should take.
And it was kinda a snowball effect on, on everybody out there. Once the one guy got a little bit behind, everybody got behind, and, and it was just kinda, you had to be there, I know that.
And I, I do have additional, I've got about ten to twelve thousand dollars in here for getting through the winter with things and finalizing, because I know there's gonna be some settlement and some, we've got some final quantities we have to hammer out with them and get this to the point where you guys can have a ribbon cutting that everyone's proud of. And so I do have a little bit in here, and obviously, if we don't use it, we're not gonna charge you for it. It's, and, but you won't see me back here again asking for more, I can promise you that.
Okay, thanks, Bob. At this time, if there's, I really don't think there's gonna be any questions on that. I would look for council action. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Bob.
Mayor, could I, could I just say something? Bob, while you're here, I just wanna thank you for putting up with all of us. You know what I mean? And all the, the changes that we've made along the way, and, and, you know, being steady and working with this whole project. I just think you, you guys, you've done a great job.
Well, Bob found out early, too, that if he brought pizza and wings to all those...
The chicken helped a lot, man.
It was all good, wasn't it, huh?
Yeah. Bruce, it's easy to do something you love, and this is one of those projects that I love.
Yeah. I just wanted to let you know that I had been at two fundraising-type events last couple of weeks, and anytime you get a council person at your table, of course, then you wanna talk city business. But one of the overwhelming things that people were excited about was this softball complex. It looks like one now, you know, you can drive by it and you can see it. So for everybody here that was involved, and you, I mean, yeah, we're looking at some of these numbers, plus and minus, but when all is said and done, it's a great, great resource for the community. And I had one couple say that ours is probably the best in the state. That's how they felt, so.
I agree.
I thought it was kinda interesting. I contacted the mayor about three, four weeks ago and, and asked him what I thought the savings were by utilizing city-owned property, and, and it was kind of amazing. Well, what did we figure, about one point? A little over one point three million dollars.
A little over one point three million dollars on the property that we used by city dollars, yeah. Okay, thanks, Bob. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Any, any old business that we need to discuss?
I've got one quick item, or maybe you wanna call liaison report. The utilities department did find the leak on Nineteenth Street, and it is fixed, so we can cross that off our list that we've talked about a number of times the last year, year and a half, so. And I think next spring, then, that'll be, the road will be redone out there, and, okay.
You can tell, yeah. They'll mail and overlay that particularly, yeah.
Mayor, just a quick update with ice?
Well, ice is going extremely well. We did hire RS Architects out of Sioux Falls as the architectural firm. I believe they've, they also include in their, their packet, Banner and Associates are gonna be working with them. I, I also think that they're using Stevens Ice out of Wisconsin for their ice. Yep, all within that contract for RS Architects, and it went very well. We had meetings today with the CMAR. We had two extremely good candidates. There was four that were sent in, ranging, just a range of, of area from nine hundred thousand dollars to five hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the CMAR project. So we had the conversations, we've had the, the meetings, and we will come back with a decision here shortly, our group, that will recommend which CMAR to go with. It's going well. And I will tell you this, just so you know, everybody that we've talked to between the architects and the, the CMAR, all feel an eight million dollar project is workable. That's kind of a nice deal. I think there's some coax, kinda on a bet going on someplace on this day over here.
Mayor, I have a question. Are we, we are using Tegra, is that true, for the...
Tegra is there. Tegra has been...
Owner's rep.
Instrumental as our owner's rep in, in handling all the, the contract negotiations and talks with our, our architects on the CMAR.[1750.22]